Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our September 17th, 2019's Board of Commissioners meeting today. And we'll lead out with our invocation with a nice share of room paint.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let's power his voice. Dear Heavenly Father, as we gather today at this meeting, we ask that you will be in our midst. Help us to make decisions and set goals that will be pleasing to you. Help us to be able to discuss the matters at hand in a reasonable way and to be willing to give up having our own way. God lets me be productive and as should be in all areas, case, in all areas of our lives. Help us to keep you at the forefront of our minds. Amen. Please rise and place your flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for the liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, I trust everyone is looking after minutes or whatever in the 20 o'clock. Can I get a motion for approval minutes for August 22, 2019?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Any discussion? All in favor, please see if I raise your right hand. Discussion just agenda. Mr. Honeycock, you have anything?
Yes, sir, we do. As we discussed at 8 o'clock, we would like to add Budget Amendment 134 and 137 to the consent agenda. This was discussed. If there's any questions, let us know. And then also, under consent, we would like to add the Power Tech request on October 31st as number 13, and then the construction for the court, or bid for corporate area expansion at the Wayne Jetport as number 14. And again, these were discussed at our 8 o'clock pre-agenda briefing.
That would, that would be the approval of the bid?
Yes, sir.
For the corporate?
Yes.
Does any Commissioner have anything to add or comments? If not, can I get a motion to approve of the September 17th agenda?
Motion.
Motion made. Any discussion? All in favor, please see if I raise your right hand. Thank you. Mr. Honeycock, special presentation.
We do have our circus of pen awards, and the chairman will read out our 1, 5, 10, 15, and 20 years.
If you will please stand in front of the commissioner so we can get a picture afterwards. Beginning of our one year, we have Dennis Brock with the Sheriff's Office.
These are bad guys.
Lakeisha Mathis, DSS Regular Services. Ashley Mooney, Animal Control. Yolanda Singletary, DSS Child Support.
Is that the guy? You're just going.
Joshua Stocks, Sheriff's Office. Trent Thompson, Public Affairs.
Sir, the deputy called, what was his name? Because they may have come in.
Um, I have Dennis Brock.
There he is.
Bring it out, there it is. Read that name.
Thank you, Mr. Page.
Thank you.
Jeremy Cheney, School Resource Officer. Hope Freeze, Emergency Medical Services. Kevin Harrell, Information Technology.
What kind of thing is that?
Elisa Huerta, Non-Emergency Transport. Jamir Moore, DSS Regular Services. David Pope, Wayne County Development Alliance. Oh, that's more.
What are you saying? We had our new hire?
Deanna Roundtree, DSS. Sarithia Solis, DSS. Christina Sosa, DSS. Matthew Strickland, School Resource Officer. Kayla Sutton, DSS. And Amy Whitley, Emergency Medical Services. All right, that's it for our one year. Stay.
Picture?
No, keep standing. We've got our five year. No, we're going to do all of them together.
No, no, they two years.
So you guys get to stand up. All right, our five year, beginning with Deborah Brock with Facilities. Ms. Brittany Fields with Solid Waste. And our chairman is on there for five years, so congratulations, Chairman Gurley.
There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Page.
Haley Morris with the Health Department, WIP. Terry Grant, Emergency Services. Donald Griffin, Jr., DSS. Xavier Lee with the jail. Wendy McKinnon, DSS. And Lyndon Sutton, School Resource Officer. All right, that's it for our five year. Beginning with Martin McAlder with the Sheriff's Office. Jonathan Pearson, jail. Michelle Sutton, DSS. Jessica Tillman, Emergency Medical Services. Lori Brantley, DSS. Travis Cox with the Sheriff's Office. And Giorgio Cristage, Information Technology. And that concludes our 10 year, and now we'll move on to 15. Under our 15 year, we'll begin with Jeff Sparrow with Solid Waste. And Jennifer King, Emergency Medical Services. That's it for our 15 year. And finally, our 20 year, we have Mr. Delmas Cox, Solid Waste. Patricia Hare with the Sheriff's Office. And Summer Young, Cooperative Extension. All right, and that's it. Please give everybody a. All right, if some of you over here to the sides kind of Joel, just let me know if you can get that. There we go. He's got it. All right, well, thank you very much. He's got the picture. Thank you very much.
Next, I want to introduce Annette Sutton, who's our interim EMS director for the R O S C recognition.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I'm going to ask Alex Westford to come up and recognize our staff that has, in the last quarter, saved lives. And I'm not sure if he'll tell you exactly what they did, but we would like to recognize these individuals.
This morning, we'll hand out some ROTS pins, which stands for Return of Spontaneous Circulation. The ones we're going to recognize this morning had a victim or a patient in cardiac arrest, and they did get a pulse back, and that patient did survive to hospital discharge. So at this time, we can go ahead and proceed for Heather Drake. Ms. Rosalie Cobb, again. Mr. Jackson Gray. That's all I have for today. On the back of each one of these coins is the date that they responded to that call of the cardiac arrest where the, they got a pulse back on that patient. So each one of these coins is a, is a little bit special, has a little bit more special meaning to each one of them.
I think Mr. Honeycock has a word, guys.
Yes, we appreciate what all of our first responders do in the county, regardless of what ages they are within. But folks, this is what it's all about right here. Most of the average citizens do not know what these people have to go through on a day-to-day basis. Some of the calls they go on, some of them are ridiculous, but a lot of them, they're in a position to save lives. And I get goosebumps when I see, see this, but, but thank y'all. You know, you don't get thanked enough, but thank y'all for what you do. We really do appreciate it. And most of all, the citizens of Wayne County appreciate it. They may not act like this, like it sometimes, but, but they do. They appreciate what y'all do. Thank you so much.
Alex, Joel did get their picture if you guys want any copies of that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and appreciate your support of all of our employees. Next, I have the privilege to introduce our new Director of Veteran Services, Ms. Amy Smith.
Amy?
Amy, you'll come up. Amy has worked with the county for a couple of years now. Amy served as the Assistant to Brenda Dubois. Amy is a certified VA.
Veteran Service Officer.
Veteran Services Officer. We are privileged and honored to have Amy work with Wayne County. When the position became open, I've never received as many nice emails from veterans thanking Amy for the job that she has done, complimenting on the job and her personality and the way she does things and how she fights for our veterans. And we are lucky and privileged to have Amy here. Amy, if you have any comments you want to make?
I'm just, again, thankful that you and the board allowed me the opportunity to do this. I do work with some tremendous, wonderful veterans, and it's a privilege to serve them and serve Wayne County. I actually serve surrounding counties as well, so I look forward to many, many years of serving them in Wayne County.
Mr. Chairman, just let you know, we've been talking about you behind your back. I've been checking up on you. And I've heard some really good things of the work that you're doing, and the veterans really appreciate it, so keep it up. Thanks.
Yes, sir. Certainly, thank you very much.
Well, is that every time a new person comes in to anything, there's something that they would want to bring to the table, something they would want to add, something they may think they've not seen being done, not putting on the spot today, but at some point, you might want to come back and share with this public, this group, with the public, anything that you see that could be an improvement in the life of veterans and anything that may be missing. Because we hear all these sometimes harsh stories about sailors that save the number of veterans that take their own lives. And that's, that's depressing to hear that, based upon what we all know that many have gone through.
And I think there's a stigma too around the Wayne County Veteran Service Office. A lot of, the reason why is a lot of community believes that we are the VA. We are not the VA. What we are are Veteran Service Officers who assist the veterans in filing claims against the VA. The VA has what's called a duty to assist. Therefore, they train me, they certify me to file claims against them, to help the veteran. So I want that stigma to go away, where we have citizens that ride by and see Veteran Services, they automatically think VA. We are not VA. We file claims against the VA. So our sole priority is helping these veterans get their benefits. So that's going to be my number one goal, is to try to get that stigma away from the name Wayne County Veteran Services. And stigma might not be the correct word to use, but we are not the VA. So that's going to be my number one goal, is to try to get the word out that we are here to help you apply for what benefits are available for you. The thing is, is you have to come into a block. We can't, I mean, we can go out to the community and preach and beg all we want, but you have to come in and sign on that line. So that's going to be my number one goal, is to make sure that we can get the word out that we are here for you. We don't work for the VA. We do not. I work for Wayne County.
So they, that one, you're good, just want to make sure they see you on camera and hear you in the microphone.
But that's the number one goal that I intend to try to make, make known. But as far as diving into the Director's role, I have not had that opportunity to dive in just yet. As you all know, we are slammed at Wayne County Veteran Services. I see on average 20 to 30 veterans a day during our walk-in hours. So I've been very busy with me being the only one in the office right now. We have advertised for the BSO Assistant position. Hopefully, we get someone in there. We'll be able to get that person trained. They have to be certified within a year, so they'll be able to help me process claims through the Veterans or Veterans Administration.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Well, thank you for the opportunity. I'm excited. I look forward to it, and I hope that I can improve on some situations, some scenarios, and stay with the guys for a long time. Thank you.
Next is a motion to approve, excuse me, Senior Center Month proclamation and update on Senior Center Activities by Paula Everett.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to come here today to address you and the public about Senior Center Month. I do have a proclamation to read and to have the, with your permission, to read and then have you to accept, if that's okay with the Commissioner Board. Okay. Whereas older Americans are significant members of our society, investing their wisdom and experience to help enrich and better the lives of younger generations. And whereas the Wayne County Peggy M. Seeger Senior Center has acted as a catalyst for mobilizing the creativity, energy, vitality, and commitment of older residents of Wayne County. And whereas, through a wide array of services, programs, and activities, senior centers empower older citizens of Wayne County, North Carolina, to contribute to their own health and well-being, and the health and well-being of their fellow citizens of all ages. And whereas, the Wayne County Senior Center affirms the dignity, self-worth, and independence of older persons by facilitating their decision and actions, tapping their experiences, skills, and knowledge, and enabling their continued contributions to the community. Now therefore be it resolved, the Wayne County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim the month of September 2019 as National Senior Center Month, and calls upon all citizens to recognize the special contributions of the Wayne County Peggy M. Seeger Senior Center participants, and the special efforts of the staff and volunteers who work every day to enhance, enhance the well-being of the older citizens of our community, adopted this 17th day of September 2019.
The motion on that, motion to approve is read.
I should, approve, raise any discussion, comments, questions, or answer? Of the above, I ask all in favor, please see if I raise your right hand.
Thank you. I can just have a few seconds just to tell you about some activities we have to celebrate Senior Center Month. As I said, it is Senior Center Month. So we have planned a few extra activities or events for the seniors. And one of them is tomorrow, we have our advocacy lunch, and I think you've seen your invitations, that we're encouraging the elected officials and the county manager and other representatives to come and meet with the seniors. And it's just an opportunity that we like to provide, where they can meet you one-on-one and, and know who you are, and share with you any, anything that, suggestions, ideas, or anything they'd like to give input to and share with you. But I think also, they'd just like to tell you thank you. I try to go back and tell them, you know, during budget time and things, when we go through, that how much you support the Senior Center. We would not be able to have the activities and all the services we provide without your support. And they are happy, and they want to tell you that they're pleased with what we have there, and it's because of your support. So we want to thank you for that. And we hope to see you tomorrow, 11:30, to have lunch with them as well, so that they can express that. Also, on the September 23rd, at 5 o'clock, we are having a hot dog social, and afterwards we'll have bingo, those that like to stay and play bingo. And then on the September 25th, we have a couple of things going on. One is at 10 o'clock, we're having Vanessa Hill from East Point. She will be at the Senior Center to present about substance abuse in older adults. And this is open to the public of any age, to professional seniors, caregivers. I consider maybe a training as well, those that would like to hear what she has to say in regards to substance abuse in older adults. Later on that day, at 1:30, we'll have the drama team, and they'll provide entertainment by performing several short skits, dealing with some present-day situations. We just had breakfast with the Director last week, and that was a good turnout, serving the seniors and hearing their input, that they like to share with me about maybe some things they want to see at the Senior Center and to enjoy as well. But we want to invite the public to come and participate in these events, see what's going on at the Senior Center. We're going to have a lot of things going on this year, so we want you to come and be a part. And thank you so much for allowing me to come this morning and sharing this as well, and your support.
Next, we have our public comments time. Anyone here like to speak before this floor, please come to the podium. Anyone wish to speak? Public comment time is closed. Appointment committee, Mr. Akot.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We have one appointment today. We have a request from the Indian Springs Fire Department. They have, one of their fire tax commissioners passed away, and they have submitted the name of Mr. Robert Dwayne Lewis to fill the vacancy on their fire tax commissioner, is a fire tax commissioner, and that's in form of a motion, sir.
I've heard a motion, any discussion? If not, all those favor, please see if I raise your right hand. Now, it's the 9:15 public here in time. So I ask Mr. Barry Gregg come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before I get started with this request, I do have a few pictures I would like to pass out to you, kind of to help you visualize kind of what we're talking about here. This is an amendment to our decline County Electronic Gaming Operations Ordinance. And I'll start with a little background. Back in 19, or excuse me, 2012, the Board of Commissioners adopted an ordinance placing restrictions on the location of electronic gaming facilities. Within that ordinance, there is a section that includes, basically, that you can have two machines that can be established within a commercial business without having to meet the certain ordinance requirements, such as the 1,000-foot setback. the certain ordinance requirements, such as the 1,000-foot setback. So in an existing business that's operating, two machines would be the limit. They are considered accessory, it's an accessory use or accessory machines. Since that time, we've had machines, or the industry has developed machines that can now accommodate multiple players. Since the passage of that ordinance, there have been changes in the technology that's used. Some of those machines now go no longer are the stand-up machines like you typically would see in like a gas station, for example, where one person would play. Now they've been designed where they can sit anywhere from five to 10 people. Most of them that we've seen can sit up to 10 people for each. They're called fishing tables, is one example of those type of machines. And you can see that in the pictures that have been passed out, a couple of examples of those. I think one is an example of an eight-person table, and another one is a 10-person table. Now, with these changes, with the number of people who can use the machines at any given time, we have seen or heard of some concerns from neighboring businesses and property owners regarding those. Since they are not, the ordinance originally was not intended for this type of use, you know, to have such a large number, up to 20 potentially, in a given business, owned a gaming machines. So therefore, we are asking that Commissioners look at the ordinance. We've recommended mainly two changes. We tried to keep it as simple as possible, basically to clarify that in Section 18-154, that the machines be, are designed now for single players, to clarify that. So that the two machines used as an accessory use within the business would be for single players only, not multiple players. And then also, the compliance period for those machines to bring that part of compliance, it should be accessory to an existing business use. Then we're asking that that be 30 days to comply with that, this new requirement, if approved. And with that said, I would be glad to answer any questions. And again, this is a public hearing, so there may be some folks here who would like to speak as well.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
So right now, our ordinance says one person per machine, is that right?
No, our ordinance now just says you can have two machines in a business operation, but doesn't say how many people can use that machine at any given time. So what was, I believe was intended to be single-person machines when the ordinance was developed, are now being designed to house or accommodate 10 people. And so basically, the ordinance was silent as to how many people can use it at one time. So we want to clarify further and make sure it states that it's for single users.
Okay. Thank you.
Please bear with me, but I think maybe this is the first time I have actually seen a picture of one. And I don't know that I've, I've never, I think I remember seeing guys at a single They are playing against the machine, not each other. Is that correct?
As far as I know, they're playing against the machine.
They're playing against the machine. Did you say as far as you know?
As far as I know. The fishing tables, I've never, I haven't done a lot of research in those, or been in an establishment, or actually set at one, you know, to see how to play. But what I can tell, you don't play against the other person, as far as I know, is you're playing against the machine.
But, so there's a potential that you could have people playing against each other?
There's that potential. The industry, the technology changes constantly, so there is that potential.
If I understood you correctly, that you would want to keep it at two persons per this table. But clearly, if someone bought this table, put it in their business, we need to put something in place on the front end, keep a person from unnecessarily investing in something that use up to eight or 10 players, if our intent is to keep it down to two players per machine. Is there some front-end stuff that we need to do? Maybe I'm jumping ahead, but...
Right. And that's what we're looking to do with this amendment, is to put in there that it's for single users only, so that machines that are designed for multiple users, it's up front, and when people see this ordinance, they know it's clear that it's for single users.
Therefore, wouldn't invest in a more expensive, multi-
Right.
A 10-person, eight, 10-person machine, and then be back to us wanting to up in the ante, if you will?
Right.
I suppose I need to get out more.
Me too.
Is this a game of skill, of actually playing a game, or is it for winning dollars? Is there a prize to be won?
Something is won, yes.
I mean, what's the draw, is what I'm trying to say, because you can just get on the computer at home and play games.
Right.
So there must be some money changing hands here.
Right. Right.
There is.
As far as I know, there's money, there's, I've heard of gift cards, you know, all sorts of things that you win, but money is a big part of it.
Well, I'm amazed, I've seen a new sweepstakes open down on Highway 70, on an old gas station that nobody could operate, make any money at, but every time I go by there, there's 30 cars out there.
Right.
So evidently, there must be some money changing hands somewhere along that.
Right. There is an attraction there, that's right.
There is an attraction.
That's right.
With that in mind, those businesses that in fact have, in fact, invested in this type of a machine, based upon our ordinance where it would be allowable.
Right.
They are going to have 30 days in order to eliminate that machine, or bring their business up into compliance.
Right.
Is that correct?
That's right.
Well, if in fact they are located within 1,000 feet of a residence, then they could not bring their business up to that. Is that correct?
That's right. Yes, sir.
So approximately, how many of these establishments, if you know, that we have in Wayne County? And how many are in that 1,000-foot distance?
Right. We have six establishments that we're aware of in the county that have machines. And-
That allow for multiple?
Some of them have machines that are multiple players, some of them have the single-person machines. I think the multiple players we had, that we found, I think three of those were multiple, had the large tables for multiple people, three out of the six. But out of those, probably, I wouldn't, based on where they're located, I don't believe any of them would probably meet the 1,000-foot requirement with the ordinance.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes. You know, I think we've gone through this about three or four different times, and I don't think any of the Commissioners know anything about this, these machines, or, matter of fact, it doesn't seem like anybody knows anything about them. So maybe we need to ask somebody that knows about them to come in and enlighten us on what the total operation. I know if I bought a machine that would fit 10 people, and then we want to cut them down to two or something like that, I mean, that don't sound right. So, and I don't know enough about the machines to even sit here and make a determination whether or not we should allow these type businesses in Wayne County or not.
Well, yeah, these machines, you know, the state has a statute that regulates these type of machines, and there's an injunction that's been in place for a few years now that prohibits enforcement of those, that statute. So that's why you see these machines popping up now. So it's kind of left right now for local jurisdictions to decide that we want to deal with them or not. And like I said, back in 2012, of course, Wayne County developing ordinance to address, you know, this type of thing. The reason is unclear as to what these machines are, is because they have changed so much because of the statute. They were, the industry has changed on where they find a loophole in the statute, where, you know, instead of a game of chance, it becomes a game of skill. And then, you know, is there how much money that's being given out at any given time, you know, versus gift cards or other thing, you know what I mean? There's been changes to that, to kind of work around that state statute. Our ordinance, however, though, is, I wouldn't say general enough, but our definition encompasses most of that, or all of that. So our ordinance is a good ordinance in that we don't have to change our definition of what the machine is. It already captures that. So regardless of how they change that machine, in terms of whether it gives out a certain amount of cash, whether it's skill-based, or whether it's chance-based, you know, our ordinance still captures that as an electronic gaming machine. And so, so that's kind of where, where we are right now with it. You know, in the future, those machines will change again, like I said, and that's why we want to get ahead of this, because what's a 10-person machine today, once the industry knows that, you know, you can do this in Wayne County, you're going, you know, you potentially could get a 12-person machine, 16-person, 20-person machine, and then where do you stop? So we're trying to actually get ahead of it, to keep this from snowballing. Wayne County is very attractive to the industry. We get calls and visits often from the industry looking for sites. So with this, our ordinance being open to these type of machines, even though there's only two, we are opening ourselves up to a lot more of these and more impacts to neighbors, so.
Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry. Would-
Mr. Chairman. I think I was next. If these things are allowed to be there, I'm pretty sure they have internet access, which allows internet gambling. That's why you've got so many people coming in, not just the skilled games that they play on the machine itself. And they're in basically 24 hours. We just closed down one on Harrah Road, what, two months ago? And it was infringing on the property rights of the residents living there. They were there 24 hours parking in their driveways and all that, and then also attracting, unfortunately, a bad element. Those are the things that I personally worry about. If somebody wants to sit on their home computer and gamble all their money away, that's entirely within, that's fine. But they're, you know, they're infringing on the rights of the property owners who are around them, and that I find to be a problem. So I think this is a really good idea.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mayor. I'd like to, I'm going to put our sheriff on the spot. Sheriff, do you, do you know anything about these gaming machines? I know that you're involved in investigations and things like that. If you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, could I ask the sheriff to give us some information?
Thank you. I am aware of some operations in Wayne County. This fish game is something that has come about over the past few years, that does allow multiple users. Not only these, but there are other games of chance that change, you change the software to get around the current law, and then they can change the software. There's currently a court of appeals case. That's the reason our law enforcement is having problems now going in and inspecting some of these establishments and enforcing certain laws. So I would like to see this ordinance come about to help me enforce things that we get complaints on, such as the 24-hour time that it goes on all night. It does have a lot of people assembling in a small area. Typically, these places have blacked-out windows, you have to be buzzed in, which I know why they're doing it, to protect themselves, but you also have to ask, why do you have to do it? It does attract an element, because there is a lot of cash potential going on that we've had situations of robberies and things of that nature. So there are a lot of elements that we have to look at when we're talking about these games, and this will help eliminate some of the problems that we're having if you don't have allowable single-user access.
Mr. Chairman. I think is one thing that all of us is in agreement on, we don't understand these games. I mean, I do good just to cut a cell phone on, but I just feel like we need to rely on our staff, the Planning Department, Sheriff's Department forgot us on this. I mean, there was a reason that Barry came up with this, the change in this ordinance, and, you know, that's what we hire them for, to bring us the information that's correct as they noted it is. And I feel like that we need to abide in what the information that they are bringing to us, because, you know, they, I'm quite sure they put a lot of time and effort in this, and wouldn't be bringing something for us, before us, that they really didn't have the confidence that it needs to be done in Wayne County. And I just want to thank y'all for what you've done. But we, right here is our information, our source right here. We've got to rely on what they're telling us, and if they say this needs to be done...
Mr. Chairman, this has also been gone through our planning board as well, and is recommended by our planning board for the changes as well.
Mr. Chairman. I really don't have a problem in the changing of the ordinance. What I'm concerned about, again, is a business owner that under our ordinance acquires a machine, and it fit, whether we like it or not, at the time of purchase of that particular machine, it fit the ordinance. It abided by the ordinance. Now we're changing the ordinance and basically saying, your investment is liberated in 30 days. You've got 30 days to remove it, because you cannot comply with the 1,000-foot rule, so you're going to have to eliminate the machine. And so I just think it's a little bit kind of harsh on the business owner to have invested in the machine, and then all of a sudden, he's got 30 days to eliminate the machine. I think the 30 days is a little bit harsh, is what I'm saying.
And if I could add, we've had, as I mentioned, we've had six operations where there have been either more than two machines, or we have the tables themselves, and out of those, five of them have actually come into compliance. They called their supplier, and the supplier comes and picks up the machines pretty quickly. All of, all of the five have, and so they've actually already been removed. There's a supplier that does pick those up, and does that rather quickly.
So, I understand you to say that basically it's only one business that is not, would not be in compliance?
Yeah, as far as we know at this point, the ones we've inspected and that we know about, we know of one right now that's still-
Now, you're bringing up another issue, and that is evidently they're not purchasing the equipment. There is a company that supplies the equipment. Is that correct?
The ones that have come into compliance, that's what they have told us, is that their supplier-
So see, I was of the assumption they would be buying the equipment, but you were just saying they're basically leasing or rented or whatever.
The ones we've dealt with, that's the case, yes.
Okay. That changes my objection.
And I will say, for the record, as Mr. Honeycutt said, the planning board did review this at their planning board meeting and did recommend approval.
Mr. Chairman. You're talking about two machines, but each machine has only one user. It's not two users on each machine. So you're-
A single-user machine.
Single-user machine.
Mr. Mayor. And just to reiterate, the existing six businesses that we have now, the ones that I'm aware of and have been involved with in the past as a Commissioner, if they have, for instance, room for 10 parking places, but with this new, with this new machine, they could go to 20 or 25 parking places, and there's a concern, and this has been expressed to me by citizens, there's a concern of parking space. Sometimes you can see in other counties, that I go through on the way to the coast, people parked up and down the road, the public road. These are concerns from the feedback that I'm getting from the citizens, and I'm seeing in, in the recommendation here, that that is part of the reason we needed ordinance.
Right. We are, we are hearing those complaints. That's right. That's part of it.
Okay. Thank you.
I hear a saying through what comments the sheriff has made, however the ordinance easily is not, there's a potential to allow problems to come into our county that can grow. Windows are blacked out, and it sounds, it sounds headed towards a danger. And it sounds like if the companies had the folk to pick up their eight or 10 machines, I guess they went back- I guess they went back to a more simplified version. I, I guess they probably still have it available, it's just that they're not those eight or 10-user machines. They brought back to the single use. Is that, you think that's what they've done?
Right, yes, you can have two single users, two machines, and the ones that have come to compliance either have gotten rid of all their machines altogether and just not want to operate, or they just still have the two, or they just have two single-user machines.
So it's part of what you're recommending is that we be comfortable with a business having two of the single-use machines?
That's right. That's right.
Mr. Doctor, does that seem more reasonable for the vendor, for the, for the owner, for the business?
Right.
Because we don't want to slam the door on someone's finger that thought there was a doorknob to get through, but we don't want to open us up to Beavis County in eastern North Carolina that's got traffic line alongside the road, as my colleague here says he's seen other places.
I think that was the original intent when the ordinance was enacted, and that was they were single-using.
Right.
It just, we just didn't define it.
Right. In fact, then, there, there was no such thing as a, I don't believe there were fish tables to be even heard of.
Fish tables. What do you call them?
Fish tables.
Fish.
Right. Fishing.
I think there's people in audience may want to speak, do you have this time to come up and speak?
What does the, the attorney say we can do, but we can't.
It's closed. I mean, I'm hearing it's now closed.
Mr. Chairman. We need a motion.
We need a motion.
I'd like to make the motion that we accept the electronic gaming operation ordinance amendment as presented by Barry Gray, our planning director. Simple motion.
Motion remains in discussion. So discussion, all clear, please. See if my vision right here. All right, so now we will convene the board of adjustments.
Recess the board.
Recess, I'm sorry, recessed board, commissioner convened the board of adjustments. May I ask Mr. Barry Gray come forward? We need to swear before, uh, Barry in.
You swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth to help you go.
I do. All right. We have a special use permit request for Torres Mobile Home Park. This mobile home park has, excuse me, this mobile home park has 13 lots. It's located on Genoa Road. It's about a mile south of Peekin Road. This is, the property is currently zoned RA-20, which means basically that, that this requires a special use. The RA-20 zoning district, mobile home parks are only allowed as special use, which is why this, of course, is before you today for you to review. Surrounding this property, you can see on the screen here, to the south, there are other mobile home developments around. To the south, you have some other single wides. There might be a few double wides around in the area as well. And you can see the site is basically in the middle of the screen where the 1033 address points are. There are currently some mobile homes on the property now, existing mobile homes. So they'll be, like I said, the whole thing will be redesigned, it'll be moved once the mobile home park goes in. With that said, since this is a special use, there are findings of facts that the board would consider, and I'm gonna read those for the record really quick. The proposed use does not adversely, does not affect adversely the general plans for physical development of the county and will not be contrary to the purposes stated in these regulations, referring to our zoning regulations. The proposed use will not adversely affect the health and safety of the county residents and will not be detrimental to the use or development of adjacent properties or other neighborhood uses. The proposed use will not affect adversely by existing uses and will, will not be affected adversely by existing uses and will be placed on a lot of sufficient size to satisfy the space requirements of said use. The proposed use will not constitute a nuisance or hazard because of the number of persons who will use such a facility, the vehicular movement, or the noise or fume generation. And the proposed use shall be subject to the minimum dimensional requirements of the district in which it is to be located and shall conform to the off-street parking and loading requirements. And finally, I'll mention, since this is a special use, the board can impose or require additional conditions, basically to ensure that it meets the health and safety requirements of the community. So there is that ability to place conditions on this if you feel that some need to be added for health and safety concerns for the community and to protect the value and use of property in the general neighborhood. The planning board has reviewed this request and does recommend approval. Staff has advertised for this public hearing. We have sent notices to adjacent property owners. We posted a sign at the property, and we've advertised in the newspaper as well. With that, I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Mr. Chairman. I guess my, my concern is, is that, as we discussed at 8 o'clock, the RA-20 is 20,000 square feet.
That's right.
For a lot. Is there, were you given a reason why the 20,000 couldn't be applied to this, there would be less lots available? But were, is there any reason why they couldn't comply to 20,000?
Well, of course, to comply with the 20,000, of course, they would lose some lots, you know, obviously. With the mobile home park ordinance, they meet the requirements of that ordinance in terms of the lot size, but because of the RA-20, as I mentioned earlier, RA-20, because they're asking for something special, you know, additional density than what typically would be allowed in the RA-20 district, that's, of course, why it's a special use. So those type of things, you know, in terms of requiring a larger lot size that may mirror the RA-20 district, you know, if you can tie it to the, the general area, you know, in terms of a reason to apply it, you know, you could actually add a condition regarding that, potentially. If you can, if, you know, if you determine that, you know, that's more suitable for the area, a, a larger lot size, I believe that would be a potential there for additional conditions.
Mr. Chairman.
I feel that's the case.
Really, this, this is, this is about the rezoning. I mean, as far as it meeting the mobile home requirements, if we rezonate, it's gonna meet the mobile home requirements, correct?
Right, right. It'll meet the mobile home requirements, that's right.
So this, this is not a, this is not an issue about the meeting the requirements of a mobile home, because this, this is strictly a rezoning, this.
It's a, well, it's a special use.
Right.
That's right. It's a special use.
But I thought, I thought it was RA-20. That is a county, right?
It is. It is RA-20, but with the special use, you can place additional conditions on it. Basically, with RA-20, the mobile home park ordinance would still apply in the RA-20 district. So it does meet the mobile home park standards, even with the smaller lot size in the RA-20, but because it is a special use, you can vary that lot size to a smaller lot that, that would be allowed in the mobile home park ordinance.
Yeah.
But, but again, like I said, if you do make changes to the lot size and add a condition that the lot sizes be larger than what they're actually shown, you just need to tie that to a reason, I guess you could say, that would, a reason where that would be more compatible, for example, to the area, or there's a health and safety issue with having such small lots, you know, you would need to make sure it was tied to something if you did that.
Well, Mr. Chairman, just one follow-up. I don't want to belabor, but my, my concern is, is that if we have a, a 20,000 square foot requirement, if I want to develop my farm of 40, 50 acres, why wouldn't I be able to apply for a lesser than 20,000 square foot? In other words, if 12,000 is acceptable on a special use, why do we have 20,000 set as a standard?
Right.
And that's, that's my only concern.
Right. And because this is a special use, those are things you can take in consideration.
Okay. What kind of stipulations do we need to put on this? I'm not against this, by the way. Don't get me wrong. Is there any stipulations we need to put on this that the planning board and, and you have not put in here? Do you see anything that we need to add to it before we vote on this?
Not that, not that I have. We've been through the mobile home park ordinance. They've, the plan that they show us meets everything. They have the lighting requirements, the road standards, you know, fire hydrants, you know, everything they're showing on there meets the requirements. So there's not anything that, that has jumped out with me, or even that the planning board has had any concerns with, with this mobile home park.
Okay. I'm good, thank you. This kind of brings that limmer. If you pull up the map that we have here, and if you scroll down, well, the other way, the other way. Okay, a little bit more. All of this vacant area here, this woodlands area that's adjoining this track, you'll see there was a road bed that was put in there. Well, I was involved with that. This tract of land there that's adjoining this property some 20 years ago, I had acquired and was putting a subdivision in here, and that entire project was killed as a result of the ACUS zoning because of the noise for the base.
Right.
So I assume that the property next door would also be in the ACUS zoning. Is that correct?
Yeah, our, the area, the property next door is in the, let's see here. It's in the half-mile from the ACUS. So actually, that property in our current ordinance zoning is just outside of the.
So it's not in the ACUS?
It's in the, it's in, what's called a half-mile, which is basically about, right outside.
And the way that overall thing occurred was basically the noise requirements would require a minimum lot size because of the ACUS. But you're saying this property is not in the ACUS?
That's right.
Okay. All right, then I'll eliminate that. Number two question comes up, and that is, it was my opinion that all septic tanks and mobile home parks would require, with community water, would require a minimum lot size of Is that not applying here? Because these lot sizes are less than that.
Right.
Has the health department actually given an okay for this size lot to accommodate the?
No, well, no, not at this time. This is just the start of the process before they move forward with any detailed work or additional work. So environmental health will look at these lots and, and if they need to become bigger, environmental health will require it to become bigger, which means they may actually lose some lots in the end, but.
All right. So in other words, the health department hasn't.
No.
And we're not approving the subdivision. All we're doing is allowing for a special use for them to proceed on to possibly try to acquire the septic tank permit.
That's right.
Right.
Like I said, those lots may actually, their size may change. If anything, they would change larger than smaller with regards to septic, so that, that may be adjusted a little bit as environmental health gets involved.
Have you received any objections from any of the neighbors regarding the mobile home park being located here?
I have not. Not at this time.
My question, my question was gonna be, in your rider, you talk about other mobile home parks nearby. Well, Crystal Wood Court and, and I think there are more than just that one. Are they, are they doing some of the same, were they, have they done some of the same thing that this mobile home, prospective mobile home site is gonna be asking for? And does it comply with what the other ones are doing? I mean, we talk about the sewer and the size of it and so forth and so on.
Right.
Are there, have the neighbors who have mobile home parks, are they following, they planning on following, were you requiring them to follow what the other ones have done so that one neighbor's not doing something with a mobile home park that the other neighbor down the road won't allow to do?
Right. Well, in, in some cases, some of those are older, much older, so there, there might be a different rules at that time that were in place that they might not have had to have followed that this one is. But I will say that our rules now for mobile home parks, you know, compared to some of the really old ones, are more strict now than they were then. And so, so I feel like the quality of the mobile home parks today compared to those that were done 30, 40 years ago is gonna be a better quality than what you would have seen then. But yes, in terms of septic as well, they would have had to have gone and get septic permits from environmental health, even if they moved some off of those existing mobile home lots, a home off and put one on, they would have to get it, you know, have it re-inspected with environmental health. So that type of stuff is pretty typical.
I, I think, and listen to everything, I think our safeguard is gonna be what the health department approves, because I mean, you can bring all the fresh water you want and everything else, electricity and everything, but that sewer, and that is not satisfied. That's, that's gonna be, that's our safety net right there, I think.
Well, that's, that's actually what he said, is that we're not approving anything to do with the health department. It's just giving them the right to go to the health department, and they may have to change the size of these lots according to what the health department says.
That's right.
Am I right?
That's right.
Okay, all right. Mr. Chairman, I suppose I would need to do this in form of a question, but I see a distinct difference here. Now, there's a big difference. One, if you'll look at this subdivision here, this is a subdivision where the lots have been sold to individual owners, and they, in fact, own the, the manufactured home that's located on that. So these are homeowners that are living in this particular subdivision.
Right.
Now, if you skip further up north, all of that along Genoa Road is the same thing. All of those lots have been sold, and those have mortgages on them, 30-year financing on, all of that. And you are actually placing a mobile home park right in the middle of these subdivisions. And there is a big difference here. All right, there is. I want to make sure that everyone's aware that when you are approving that, it, it's a different usage, because a mobile home park, you actually rent the lot out, or rent the mobile home out. Those are rentals.
Right. That's right.
Correct?
That's right, that's right. Yeah, these are, those are lots, individual lots for sale or sold versus lots for rent that you would see in a situation like this. So there is some difference there in that, that is correct.
Whereas the different usage.
I guess, I guess the, the question, though, is that where is the opposition from these other neighborhoods? We have not. And Barry says he hasn't heard any, it's been advertised, so I understand where we're coming from.
But, 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 but let me back up a minute. Mr. Doctor is the safe net for people who may not be, that's, that's, I mean, he, I never say Mr. Mayor, but the public expects that we would look at this very closely, and I had not heard up till Mr. Doctor just brought that up, that there was a clear distinction between, because I, I'll be honest with you, when it was put in here, and I just looked down and read it, right, I was expecting that all this was probably rental. The courts or stuff around that would, would have been rental. That's what, when I alluded to the neighbors, I was thinking of the neighbors being similar. You're talking about, based upon what Mr. Doctor just said, of his personal knowledge of it, these are lots that people have put their double wides and so forth on, it's got mortgages against them versus a property's gonna be rented. Now, that, that sort of brings into, to question, I, I'm, I'm still not, I'm not against the mobile home park as such, but we may be talking about the density here and how this is gonna be developed and how it's gonna look next to folks who have. developed and how it's gonna look next to folk who have got 25, 30-year mortgages that they're paying off. We are there, we are there safe, that's, we're, we're for the people who are not here today, although I understand what the requirement is about, you can come and voice an opposition.
And the good thing about a special use is you can take those things into consideration. You know, that's what makes it a special use, is they're asking for something different or special that the RA 20 wouldn't typically allow as a ride or as a permitted use. So you can take those in consideration. You can, as I said, you know, if there's conditions you want to apply to this, you can do that to ensure that it is more compatible with the area. So there are some things that you can do there since it is a special use that you're not bound to as it would be if it were a permitted use.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
For the record, how was it publicized to the surrounding landowners?
We sent mail notices to the adjacent property owners, and then we posted a sign in the front along the road right of way, advertising the meeting.
I thought that they have all been notified.
Right, so folks who don't live adjacent, if they drive by, would see the sign and know there was a hearing scheduled.
This is a public hearing, correct?
That's right.
Could we hear from, if there's anyone in the audience that's got any comments, could we let them have some say so on this or have some input?
Yeah, we haven't had the public hearing yet, right?
This is the public hearing.
Oh, we're in the middle of it?
Yeah.
We're doing, we're doing all the talking.
That's exactly the reason I want to hear from anyone in the, in the audience.
Yeah.
All the mobile home, potential mobile home developer here? And I know this comes down to economics, you want to put in-
They need to come up so everything's gonna be recorded so we have some, so we have backup on what we're doing.
My name is Eric Torres, this is my father, Jose, I'm Torres, and we are the, well, he is the owner of the property. And what we have today is that we're trying to get this passed for the special parking land to help others and help ourselves as well. So we still have the mortgage of paying the parking, so we're trying to, as well as for them to help us and for them, for us to help them as well. And we have, we have, have told us about the requirements, about what we're asking for, and we are wanting, we are going to have the requirements for having the parking done, but it's gonna be up to y'all, so if y'all can give us permission to meet the, to have approval for allowing us to have it instead.
So this is a two, this is a combination question, Barry, and to the owner. If we did not allow for the, for the virus, okay, I think we said, then that means that they would have to, they would have to cut it back to five lots to stay within the 20, the RA 20, meaning that once developed, they will look more like the neighborhood around them, and therefore not, not take away from the integrity of the folk who've got those 20, 25, 30-year mortgages on those double wides. So that sort of means that you would have to rethink a single wide with 13 lots versus a double wide trailer that you might only be able to put in five or six. I understand that's gonna cost more of an investment, but typically, over time, you would get that investment back because you would be renting to folk who would be attracted by a double wide versus a single wide. Therefore, not immediately, but being able to gain more revenue over time. And what you would be doing is keeping the integrity of the neighborhood intact, because you would have nice, you would have a larger double wide with all the bells and whistles that you're gonna put on a 20, or 20, RA 20, 20,000 square feet versus about 11,000 square feet.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mayor.
I have a, Barry, the subdivision that Commissioner Doherty was talking about, were those people sent a notice?
No, they were, they're not, they're not directly adjacent, so we didn't send them an actual notice. Like I said, there is a sign at the road advertising the meeting for anybody who drives by, that would be interesting.
So this, this, this development that we're talking about is not next door to this-
Not directly adjacent, that's right.
What is next door?
There's a property to the south, those two L-shaped lots right there.
Yeah.
Those two.
So those are not developed like in a mobile home park or housing development or anything? Okay, so there really wouldn't be a reason for us to require Torres to put up any kind of a buffer?
Right.
Which we have required sometimes in the past.
Right, and actually, the mobile home park ordinance requires a buffer anyway from adjacent property owners, and so that's shown on the plan.
Yeah.
A buffer around it, so they were already proposing a buffer.
I see, okay. All right, thank you.
You have questions? Anyone else wish to speak? I'll close up here.
Thank you.
Thank you. So now we adjourn the board of adjustment meeting?
You can take action.
I'm sorry, does anybody want to take action down this?
I don't see the reason why not to.
That a motion? That a motion? Next motion, thank God, discussion.
Uh, one last thing, Barry. And I know this is coming before your planning, you all have fully vetted it, you're making a recommendation to us that it be approved.
That's right, it did go to planning boards, planning boards reviewed it, recommended it approved, that's right.
Circle back around.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Chairman.
Is this, circle back around.
Okay. Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
And really, all this is gonna come about before the planning board again, before anything is done, I mean, you know, correct?
Well, with it being a mobile home park, it only goes through the process once with the planning board, so what they have seen with the plan, they're good with, and so whenever they come in and do their improvements and so forth, that would come to staff and we would make sure it still meets the requirements on that.
But it's, but it's all still gonna rely on what the, what inspections-
It is, it is, and what the planning board's already approved and this board.
Okay.
Yep, those will have to be met, that's right.
It brings up another question, Mr. Chairman. What if, you say it can't come before the planning board again, but let's say, for example, that the health department says we can't issue any septic permits.
Right.
What happens at that point?
It's dead.
Right.
No, it wouldn't be dead, they could change this lot size and come back, is that correct?
That's right. If they, if they redesign it, you know, if they lose some lots and make lots larger, but it still looks like that, it wouldn't necessarily need to come back through the process, but if they end up losing most of their lots and can only do a few or have to redesign or the street's changed or they've come up with a whole new concept, that will have to go back through the process.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? If not, Mr. Jacob's made a motion. All in favor, please, if I raise your right hand. Any opposed? So we now adjourn the board adjustment and reconvene the board commissioners meeting. And next is unfinished business, Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes, sir. Next, we have a motion to approve the CDGBDR infrastructure budget changes. We did go over that during our eight o'clock session. Dave Harris, Liv Harris, RSM Harris Consultancy is here if you have any specific questions that were not answered at the moment.
I did. I never have understood these CDGBDR grants and so forth, but, correct me if I'm wrong, these grants, or this particular grant is actually to Wayne County?
Yes.
Not the city of Goldsboro?
Correct.
To Wayne County. Does the city of Goldsboro also have their own CDGBDR whatever grants?
They do not have the DR, the disaster recovery grant. The state allocated one disaster recovery grant from Matthew to the county, as it did other counties, and then any municipalities would simply participate and make requests for some of the funding. For example, Mount Olive had the request for the Carver Cultural Center for those improvements. Goldsboro had requests for storm drainage improvements. Pikeville in Fremont had requests for storm drainage improvements as well, but it all falls under one DR grant through the county.
Okay.
Does this have anything to do with, I know the city, being in the city of my business, we have, they, we have paid stormwater fees to Goldsboro, so they, they probably won't be getting any of this because they're producing their own revenue, is that correct?
I don't think it has any relationship to it, that what they're asking for is the, because they are hoping to get underway with the Herman Park Center replacement project, where they'll demolish that whole site and construct two new gymnasiums and offices and that sort of thing, they would like to go ahead and along that same time, construct the third gym. The third gym is gonna be a different type design, it's gonna be designed where it can be used as emergency shelter, it'd be for food handling facilities, there'd be additional shower facilities as far as the restrooms, a little different kind of utilization for dual use, obviously, gymnasiums during most of the time, but the rest of the time, it can be served as, it used as emergency shelter. And they'd simply like to have these two going along simultaneously, sort of finishing. They're willing to forego the 1.6 million in storm drainage work that was originally a part of the drainage project along with Fremont and Pikeville, and that's why we're transferring 100% of those funds and creating a line item for the Herman Park Center emergency shelter.
But if I'm understanding this, Goldsboro has requested that, they already had allocated 1.7, we're rounding it off, 1.7 for stormwater, and they want to put it into the Herman Park, which I have no problem with that. What I kind of want to make sure everyone's aware of is that we're taking this 700,000 that was allocated for a county project, for Seven Springs Fire Department, and we're actually allocating that now over to the city for them to use in their Herman Park project, am I correct?
Correct.
It's, most of the time on these grants, our loans, you have to use the grant dollars for projects that already have been approved, am I correct there? Or not? In other words, the, if you were reallocating dollars within this grant, would it have to be limited to only those projects that have already applied for those funds?
No.
No. What other uses could the county use the 700,000 for?
It would need to still be something related to hurricane recovery, resiliency, emergency preparedness and things like that. It couldn't be just for another county.
But the county could in fact use those, that 700,000, that is freed up because I think all of the grant dollars came from the tobacco settlement, is that correct?
No, no, this is all HUD.
All HUD.
This is state's allocation for-
But the funding for Seven Springs has been taken care of.
Correct, that's right.
We don't need the 700,000.
That's right.
Is that correct? I just wanted to make sure that we, as commissioners, recognize these are county dollars basically, and when we approve this, we are approving 700 to go over to the city for them to use for their Herman Park project, and I didn't see here any other alternatives for the county to use.
We're not approving the 700 to go over, we're approving a part of it, 300 and some thousand, we're also approving part of that to go to add Spring Creek Middle School Generator. That funding is coming out of the-
Okay.
-fire department too, and then it still leaves a $200,000 contingency for either a county project or, as these projects are bid and designed and et cetera, it could be that they could use some of those funding, some of that funding. So it's not 700,000 going in, we're actually taking the 700, and now in the process of allocating it because we know for a fact we're not gonna need it for the fire department.
True.
And we simply waited this long because it, until the, the state funding settled down and that we were clear as to what we could use for it, and since then, the priorities that have been kind of created, Goldsboro obviously is willing to switch their funding, we wanted to add Spring Creek.
So we're only adding 300,000 to theirs, is that correct?
That's correct.
And also, it's been a priority of county to have permanent shelter locations, you know, especially in the north and the south, so this is again just reallocating.
Well, I mean, this is the first I've heard of all of this, and I'm just saying, and looking at it, it looked as if we were shifting 700 over there, but you're saying, no, we're, a portion of that 700 is being shipped, 300, approximately 300. Other dollars are gonna be held back in contingency, and other dollars are actually used for the generators at the other location.
Correct.
Okay, well, great, thanks for clarifying.
Since we do have city, oh, you're right, that's, okay. My question, and I, I had not heard, I saw a picture of it. We are talking about the whole Herman Street corner there across from, am I correct? Is that that whole Herman Street corner? Is that what you're gonna take down?
Sir, I'm not here for that matter, and I'm not really directly involved in that, but my understanding is yes, the whole corner will be rebuilt.
Well, I just jumped the gun at a male, but, but that is the, so you're talking about three gyms, you wind up with three gyms on that corner? If I got the location right across from the DSS, help that whole corner over there, going back towards the library?
Correct.
So all that's gonna come down?
Yes.
And you'll put three gyms in there? Was, was that whole concept thought of before the RA Foster Gym was built? I mean-
I, I, the city's still putting billions of dollars into that, that project, that the project fund, the DR grant is not funding fully that project, it is just really helping fund that third gym that can be used as that shelter. So, you know, the city's got a lot of dollars set aside for the project, we're, this is just helping subsidize them a little bit to ensure that we've got the generator, we've got the kitchen, we have the bathrooms, and the, and the specific space available.
And this is, this is solid, and I'm extremely careful not to meddle in the city's business, but, but I was just, I was probably a little bit surprised that you would concentrate three gyms right in that corner, if that is the intent, and space for parking and whatever else involves in having three gyms that close together, and I was just curious of the concentration of that many gyms in one, in one area. And I'm sure the city people have, all the city entities have thought this out, I was just, since it's just coming to us and it's just new.
It's, that project started over 10 years ago. That project has been in development over 10 years, and it's been in the last four years, they've really got into the intense design, had their architecture firm, and looked at innumerable options on how to build it, where to build it. options on how to build it, where to build it, the facilities and of course, how to finance it. And they finally agreed to a final plan and that plan involves the, initially they have to start by the end of the year, first of next year, the demolition of all of those because everybody now has to be relocated. And then they'll start construction of the two gyms that represents really the core area. This third one would simply be done as a separate contract, separate bid because the design of it's going to be a little bit different from the other gymnasiums. It would be a dual purpose.
And to your knowledge, will that third gym, ended it, just go back on over into walls where the, we had a picnic over there. We have that center where you, there's some, a restaurant or two over there, but do you know?
I haven't seen a final plan with the third gym because I know the city has that worked out because they needed to make sure.
It would be interesting to, I mean, it would be interesting to me to know what the whole corner would look like, not that's got anything to do with how we vote today, I'm sure, but just curious.
Mr. President, I have a question. I just wanted to bring this more back, a bit of memory. We discussed this when George was the.
That's what I was going to say.
Was the county manager because we were trying to locate additional.
A more permanent.
Additional places for, if we have more hurricanes, so we can get out of the schools.
Yeah. And yes, sir, especially for the long-term shelter situation.
And this has been a long time thing we've talked about.
And so we can open, you know.
It's been a while since.
Short term, but long-term, we really do need a, a more permanent location that is away from the schools. So once the schools can open up, they can open up as quickly as possible, but we still have places for shelter, but also south as well at Carver. So that was kind of the purpose of the thought process at the time.
Mr. Chairman. And really let's get down to the brass tacks. If we don't approve this, the city is going to still come to us wanting money for the, for the generators and all of that. I mean, I mean, this might be the cheapest way out for us.
Actually, that's the way we talked about it before you arrived.
This is, this is probably the cheapest way out for us.
This is a gift.
Keep, this is mine. There was a certain amount of funding that was allocated to the city, allocated to Mount Olive, and of course, allocated for county. And this is really the, the city saying, look, the funding that was allocated to us through the DR program, we have a higher priority now than, than what we started with. We'll do storm drainage work instead of having one big 1.6 million dollar project. We will do it as we go, but we need to be able to build a third gym now along with the improvements that they're going to start on this whole site. And it just, you know, from a priority standpoint, it makes sense from the city's standpoint. And the 700,000 that was for the Fire Department, when that project went and was funded by Golden Leaf, thank goodness, that, that funding was available, county, city, Mount Olive. In other words, we're still going back, looking at what, what are the needs that exist? And, and Craig's comment about, you know, these four emergency shelter areas where we're putting the generators in, three of them are community centers and not schools. And of course, if there was a center in that part of the county where Spring Creek serves as emergency shelter, you'd probably be seeing one going there too. This, this is following through on the county's intent to have permanent shelters at facilities other than in schools, so we don't wind up disrupting schools because emergency shelters are going to be designed to last weeks, maybe longer, not knowing what will come about in the future. And at least schools will be able to function, shelters will be able to function. And this just kind of follows through on that plan that the county's had all along. The city doing this fits within that plan.
Les, do you think, does the city have a rendering of this like a, you know, an artist concept of what it all would look like?
We can, we can try, we'll get elevations.
I'd like, I'd just like to see it. I'm curious.
When we are ready to say it.
I didn't have an opportunity to see it. I don't know what anyone else saw. I don't remember seeing it. Maybe it was in somebody's meeting or something like that.
Very simple to get.
I, I move that we approve the budget changes to the CDGBDR grant.
Thank you. Next, the consent agenda. We spent a lengthy amount of time in our eight o'clock briefing.
I should approve the consent agenda.
Plus the add-ons.
Plus the add-ons.
Number's 13 and 14. Paul, favor please see if I read right. Thank you. All right, it's time to launch something, Mr. President.
Next, we, we do have Craig Vogt here. Craig is Vice President of our Community College and Craig has got a program that the college is initiating out of respect to off-the-door ship here in Wayne County.
Yes. Thank, thank you commissioners for allowing me to speak today. And I want you guys to know that we're not here asking for any money. We're here just to let you know, this is an awareness to hopefully gain your support and gain the support from the public. This is not something that's just a community college. I just happen to be the person from the community college that was involved in the project. There was about eight or nine people that started meeting back in February and we all had the same interest in looking at other communities and trying to figure out what they were doing to either help start, or small businesses start up or expand small businesses. We started looking around from the, the Western Carolina region, looking at some of the communities over there that seem to have done very well with small businesses after the textile industries have gone south. And we, we liked some stuff with programs over there. And then we also found some stuff that we liked over inside of the, inside of some other cities outside of North Carolina. Ultimately, looking through this, we came up with a program that really takes a couple of components from a couple of different programs and we mirrored them together. And I myself will be one of the project managers on it. And the reason why we do have city employees here is Scott Thaddeus Field from Goldsboro, City Goldsboro with DGDC will also be helping to manage this project. Julie has been in also on the, from the beginning, along with the Chamber and, and several other entities, including the Development Alliance. So in looking at this, one of the things that we've got as an overarching just goal, you guys have got inside your package, our strategic plan. That plan is really meant to be a internal document for us to guide us because we do have so many different partners and entities that are going to have different responsibilities. So, so if you want to read through the nuts and bolts of that, I'll be glad to answer any questions if you've already read through it. But that's really just how we're going to operate. But overarching goal of this program is we're looking at driving job creation and making our community a more attractive place to work and live by supporting entrepreneur ecosystem. And saying that with job creation, I think I've mentioned to some of you in a, in a recent meeting is one of the initiatives that the college has is that we've got students to go through programs and we've got, we've got students that have come out of a machining program and we hope to fill some positions as needed over NC manufacturing for Ray Mayo. But what are we doing to produce the next Ray Mayo? What are we doing to produce that small business that may create more high skilled and high wage jobs? We know that the Development Alliance has got some other initiatives that are going on, but that's one of the initiatives that we've got at the college is trying to identify people with talent that we've got going through our programs and help to funnel them over to be able to start some of these businesses up. In addition to that, looking at, the second piece to this is making the community a attractive place to work and live. I know I went on a trip with, with Mark and we were looking at some businesses that may be potentially moving to North Carolina and to Goldsboro. And one of the things of course was, you know, yes, we're looking at building space. Yes, we're looking at workforce, but directly after that, what do you think the next things were that they were asking? What is there to do in Goldsboro? What are the schools like? And so they were worried about what the community looked like. And so we hope that this will also help our larger businesses when they're trying to attract talent and making Goldsboro and Wayne County an attractive, attractive place to, to live and work. And looking at this though, creating this ecosystem, who's got buy-in in this ecosystem or who would be part of this ecosystem? I think anybody that has interest in really just trying to, trying to make this, this place, our community have better jobs and, or more jobs and also be an attractive place to live. So that could be anybody from the hospital who's trying to attract physicians. We heard, I think, House Representative Bell mentioned something about the hospital trying to attract physicians here. If we can, you know, possibly open up businesses that are going to support them and, and their families and what they want inside the community, well, then the hospital's got a, a component in here into the entrepreneur development ecosystem here. And looking at this though, where we really landed at, the basis of our program is a program called Launch My City that started out of inner-city Detroit. You guys, I'm sure know what happened to inner-city Detroit when manufacturing of automotive, automotive manufacturing, you had a lot of people starting to move out, well, there was a lot of people that were left living in conditions that were not optimal and they were looking at things that they could do to try to help build up some of the small businesses down there and create jobs. And Launch My City then took off after it was successful in inner-city Detroit and actually Raleigh, North Carolina picked it up and they've branded this as Launch My City. And they've got this going on in Raleigh and all the little, small suburb cities around Raleigh. So you can go to launchmycity.org and you can see a whole list of North Carolina communities that actually have that going on. And you can also see some that are even up in Canada, over in the western part of the United States and in the Midwest. And saying that, they really have this four-piece recipe that I believe, and we believe is a really good recipe. And that is if we can train the people, if we can mentor those people, if we can provide networking opportunities for those people, and if we can get them access to capital, they will have a better chance of success in opening or expanding this small business. So that's really the founding components of the system and how we intend on making that work. Couple of little nuts and bolts things. Starting in October, we're going to start to market this out into the public. We're marketing out because we'd like to find 12 people as a cohort that would have to apply to come into the program. And they would go through a 10-week training session that was done at the college through the Small Business Center. So we've already got the resources allocated as far as funding that is going to be required to teach these, these people that would be in the cohort. And looking at that, we have chose the FDIC and Small Business Administration, US Small Business Administration curriculum called Money Smart for Small Business. That is just a component of that. And then at the end with the capital, we've, we've got a meeting tomorrow where we're hoping to, hoping to secure the capital for our first round of grants, which I'll talk about here in just a minute also. And looking at this also, we wanted to make sure it be intentional with channels to generate opportunity, give you examples of some of the channels. We know, and I think you all know, that people that have good financial, personal financial practices are probably going to open up a business that would be more successful than somebody that personally cannot manage their money. So one of the components that we've actually looked into this was everybody needs to do a personal financial, a private personal financial analysis with a financial advisor. So we are going to be incorporating that into there and we're going to make sure that, that they know what they need to have if they're going to go out and if they need to obtain grants or if it's to obtain loans, SBA loans, several different avenues that are out there. Another channel, just another example, this is how it may play into the county and play into WCDAs with the development of the Goldsboro Industrial Park off of Paytown Road. If we do identify that next Ray Mayo that wants to open up a manufacturing business, making them aware of opportunities to be able to go in some of these spaces that's going to be developed inside that, that area. In addition to that, just finding resources, getting other community developers and other opportunities for funding or spaces are some of the channels that we're looking at doing that. And you'll also notice in the last slide that'll come up, all of the different partners that we have, you'll notice a lot of different channels that we've got through, some of the resources that'll be coming out. What we hope to do with this is not only get these first few grants awarded, but we hope to be able to provide more access to capital by making this a attractive program to invest in. We've seen a program over in Marion, North Carolina, that they started off with some economic development money, they provided some grants, and now they've got some outside entities that are investing in this, some of them public, some of them private. We do know that we have people inside of the community that invest inside of programs outside of Wayne County. We're hoping to give them a reason to invest right here in their own community right here inside of Wayne County. And saying that, here's a list of our partners. These are people that have been involved in some way or some shape through the process since the February of this year. And you'll see that some of these are private entities. Most of these right now are, are public entities, but really this is one of the first projects that I personally worked on where we're looking, you know, going with UMO, East Carolina, Wayne Community College, DGDC, WCDAs, the Chamber, the Mount Olive Chamber. We've got a lot of people that have really agreed to help us. And this is just our second stop of awareness that we are going to be providing for the public. Scott addressed the city council a week ago and we will also be down in Mount Olive. We'll be at the WCDAs board meeting this week and we do have several other ones that are already scheduled. Questions?
Mr. Chairman. I already had an opportunity to sit down and talk to Craig about this and what interested me was the part about the incubator. And I thought maybe since you were here, if you would come up and see how this fits with our incubator idea and how important it is for us going forward with that idea.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, it does with what we're doing on Paytown and as Craig mentioned, and what's going on with Downtown doing their incubator with Scott and what they're doing, you know, all kind of fits together, you know? Our incubator is going, park is more like when we get them there, we want them to grow there. Some of the incubators that maybe Scott may be looking at downtown is, you know, you help them get started and you grow them and they go out to, to their own facility. So, and this, this entrepreneur training and education and putting it all together really fits perfect with what we're doing on Paytown. As we build the buildings and put the folks in them, they grow there, create jobs, and that's what it's all about, is, is creating jobs. So I see it a perfect fit for what we're doing with WCDAs. So we, we're glad to be a partner. Hopefully we'll move forward tomorrow with some other stuff.
Thanks, Mark.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Seven years in the making.
Seven years.
Because, well, seven years ago, one of the first things I did as a commissioner was saying, hey, we need to grow our own. If we can't go out and get these industries to come to Wayne County, what we need to do is to find a way to make it easier for our citizens to invest and, and open businesses. And as with many of my other ideas, it kind of got shot down, so to speak, but it is. It's a great thing. I am real excited to see that we are finally have a program with great partners to actually go out in our community and get our folks that are here, living here, know all about Wayne County. They grew up here. And help them, give them a hand up on how we can actually get in business and grow a business here at Wayne County. I, I think it's fantastic. I'm excited for you.
Thank you.
And then coupled right in with Mark's idea in regards to the incubator, I think, I think we've got a winning combination.
Thanks, sir.
I, I do too. And you know, one of the things that, that I, I look at right now, I've got young children and they, they do like this community right now. Now, they haven't got to high school and, you know, I remember when I got to high school and my, my plan was, is I was going to get out of here. And a lot of high school people have that, that mentality, but you know, I think that also another thing that we can look at with this is trying to help retain some of our youth and some of the talent where they go off and maybe open up a business in the Triangle area. Let's give them a reason to do it right here.
True.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Going to create another Ray Mayo.
Yeah. You're going to ask a good competition, man. Yeah.
Just, but keep in mind, when you're talking about the manufacturing sector, everything I have is for sale, so don't forget. No, I want, I want to say 40, 41 years ago, when we started in the manufacturing sector, you were pretty well on your own as far as starting a business. If you, you knew somebody at a bank, you dealt with a Small Business Administration. Wayne Community College had some programs, but the chances of someone making it in business today because of this program and others, the percentage is very high. Forty years ago, when I started in business, three out of five machine shops failed because it's so capital intensive. Well, there's other businesses are that way. This training is going to help these entrepreneurs understand. I didn't know what I was getting into. Only thing I knew, I was, I was up here in debt, you know, and had to work. You need to understand these things before you jump into business. I think this is one of the greatest ideas to come around besides the apprenticeship program in a long time.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Craig. Next, I'd like to introduce Aaron Stryker, our Emergency Management Director, and, and just want to compliment Aaron and our OES staff and everything that happened during Doran. We took, took into fire to the frying pan, so in a very short time, but we're excited to have Aaron with us and excited about the work that he's doing. So we just wanted to give you a quick recap of what happened and, and the resources that we mobilized and, and how we responded to the storm. So that's it. Turn over to Aaron.
First of all, I'd like to apologize for bringing a hurricane into y'all five weeks into the job, but with that being said, we did in the end end up getting lucky. The 60 to 70 mile per hour gusts that we were supposed to receive never happened because the storm sped up and tacked out, out, out to the ocean. But prior to that, we started monitoring the storm around August 26th, and that's when we started receiving webinar briefings from the National Weather Service as well as conducting conference calls with the North Carolina Department of Emergency Management, their eastern branch. The. The emails that you all received, that's where that information was, was coming from. As the storm got closer, we made sure our Emergency Operations Center was equipped, got the phones in there, tested the equipment, so that when we did have to go to full activation, everything worked away well. And we only had some minor issues that arose from there, but they were corrected very quickly. We really didn't have anything going on there. Starting September 1st is when we started the, the briefings that normally come from the National Weather Service are usually just once a week on Mondays. But at that point, they were doing two briefs a day as the storm was getting closer, and that continued from the first all the way through Friday, the 6th. I think 11:30 a.m. was the last brief, so they were doing two a day from there. Starting on the 3rd is when we started getting our briefings together for county leadership and county stakeholders. That's also the same day we met with our shelter group to establish times and locations where shelters were going to be opened and which ones we were going to open. And then had a meeting to brief in that afternoon with our municipalities to let them know what the county was doing and get some feedback from municipalities what they were doing or any questions or issues that they had. Once we activated the EOC, it went to full activation on September 4th at 8:00 a.m. That's when we had all the agencies in there and we were fully staffed from that point until about 10:30 on, about 10:30 on Friday when the shelters finally closed and we get everybody out of there. We didn't really have any issues there. There was a lot of good communication within the different EOC agencies that were present. When we did have a special event that popped up was the two reported tornadoes. Only one was actually confirmed by the National Weather Service down the Marmark area, but resources and personnel were pretty quick. Communication was good with our volunteer fire departments, communicated with the EOC and getting information to us about what was happening down there. We did end up opening the two shelters, and both shelters did receive, did receive some people, but they were all out pretty early on Friday morning. We were able to demobilize and start shutting, shutting down. So all in all, we did get lucky. I happened to be outside about midnight on Thursday going into Friday, we were supposed to receive those, those big gusts, and we really didn't get it too bad. I believe the highest recorded gust we have was about 43 miles an hour in Goldsboro. The southern part of the county, they got a little bit higher, a little bit more rain, but as far as damage reports and assessments coming out from all over the county, we got off pretty light, so. And then obviously with Humberto this weekend, ended up being an even more not event, so we were good to go with that.
Good job.
I just comment.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate you keeping us up to date, and I'm also glad to see you also sent an email out to go ahead and get the review done of this thing, what lessons learned and that kind of thing. Any idea how, what timeframe it'll be that you'll be able to complete that process?
We're still collecting some information from some of the agencies. I've gotten a lot, so I am nearing completion. I just got to get in contact with a few other agencies to see what they're doing, and then that will be sent out.
Okay, thanks.
Great job.
Just, good job. We were ready this time. We were ready. You know, we've been notorious for shooting from the hip sometime, and we were good at shooting from the hip, but we were going to miss sooner or later. But, but they were ready this time.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I agree with that. I was going to say my comments to, to my commercial comments, but it's a fit right in. I understand DSS, for example, I'm chairman of the Department of Social Services Board. Kim McGuire, our director, says that the cooperation from you and your agencies and everybody concerned here in the county is just, was just unbelievable. So as far as I know, Kim in particular has reported that DSS, everything worked off well as far as taking care of the shelters. Everybody worked well together.
Yes.
So I just want to thank you for that. It was a lot smoother than it was there in Florence, I'll put it that way. Don't you agree, Mr.?
Yes, sir. We, and, and I appreciate the work. We did a lot of pre-planning, and, and I also want to thank the school system as well.
Yes.
Especially on the shelter end. We had staffing available and cafeteria staff and janitorial staff, so the food issue was resolved. It went smoothly. We, we had two stand, shelters that were already stood up, ready for overflow, so it really was a very well-run organization, and, and I appreciate you and also Brian Taylor for the work that y'all did on that.
And this was, ended up being a not event. We did, everybody did a great job, but not to get complacent because we have no idea what the next one's going to do. So we're still working and improving plans, and it's a process, but I'll keep you all informed as best I can. If anybody has any specific comments or questions or concerns, then feel free to contact me and let me know. I'll do what I can.
It was a great table, even though we were fully activated, it was a great tabletop event for us, and we really got everybody involved. And again, I appreciate the work Eric did as well.
Thank you. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Next is our video from the Association of County Commissioners.
This is Catch a Glimpse, produced by Wayne County Public Affairs for September 2019. We stopped by and visited with Jessica Strickland, our extension agent, and found out everything going on in the gardens of Wayne County right now. Part of our From the Flightline segment with Airman Parker, where he stopped by to tell us about his job at Seymour Johnson Air Force Base. And Michelle Estrada continued cooking with Michelle and taught us how to make peach crumble. Representatives came by to talk about Constitution Week that's being celebrated this week across the United States. Hurricane Dorian impacted our county, and Public Affairs kept watch over website updates, TV updates, and social media updates. And our big project in the month of August was finishing our home campaign push for fall of 2019. You'll find our home campaign products across local TV, internet, billboards, and also on local radio stations. And just last week, we celebrated the grand opening of EMS Station 11. That's been Catch a Glimpse for September 2019. Now, a video from the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. Hello and welcome to this week's Video of the Week. This week, we're taking a look back at last week's 112th NCACC Annual Conference in Guilford County. August 22nd through 24th, more than 350 county commissioners, county officials and staff, state leaders and others gathered in Guilford County for the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners 112th Annual Conference. During the business session of the conference, Kevin Austin, a Yadkin County Commissioner, ascended to the role of President of the NCACC. Commissioners voted to elect Ronnie Smith of Martin County as President-elect. Frank Williams of Brunswick County will now serve as First Vice President, and Tracy Johnson of Washington County was elected as the association's next Second Vice President. Brenda Howerton of Durham County will serve as immediate past president this year. This year's conference featured Presidential historian and Pulitzer Prize-winning author Doris Kearns Goodwin, as she spoke to attendees about leadership qualities of the U.S. presidents she's featured in her bestselling books. Dr. Jeanette Betancourt, Senior Vice President, U.S. Social Impact of Sesame Workshop, the nonprofit behind Sesame Street, joined Paige Lamell, Transylvania County Commissioner, and Jamie Lauder, Transylvania County Manager, to discuss their new partnership to build resilient children. The NCACC also celebrated the 10th anniversary of Youth Voice, a youth development and leadership program created by Mary Acker, an NCACC past president and former Cleveland County Commissioner. Several counties received awards from the Local Government Federal Credit Union for establishing innovative partnerships to improve services to citizens. The NCACC also honored the following four individuals for their achievements in support of counties. Mary Acker, NCACC past president, 2009 and 2010, and former Cleveland County Commissioner, was honored with the NCACC Hall of Fame Award for undertaking a youth leadership development initiative during her year as president. Her initiative evolved into Youth Voice, which is now a key component of the NCACC's annual conference. Kay Cashin, a Guilford County Commissioner, was recognized with the Outstanding County Commissioner Award for her lifelong dedication to addressing issues related to criminal and social justice and arts and education and outreach, among many other important causes. Dr. Mike Yoder, Associate Director and State Program Leader for 4H, and Ms. Sarah Cutchin, Youth and Adult Citizenship Engagement Specialist for 4H, received the Friends of the County Award in recognition of their instrumental role in developing and launching NCACC's Youth Voice program, which celebrates its 10th anniversary this year. It was a jam-packed and eventful 112th NCACC Annual Conference, and we thank all those who attended and who helped make it possible. Guilford County was a great host, and we look forward to seeing everyone next year in Cabarrus County for the 113th NCACC Annual Conference. Well, that's all we have for this week. If you have questions about anything you've seen here, please email communications@ncacc.org. Thank you for watching, and we'll see you next week.
I do have a couple of county managers' comments, and I'm sure the board will mention this, but I did want to thank our public affairs and our EMS staff for our grand, you know, the Miller's Chapel EMS, or excuse me, the Wilson EMS station, located on Miller's Chapel Road. Again, that was our last substation that we had to open, and I'm glad to see the hint to that project, but I think it's a great project for our community. Do want to announce that Dave Cutterback will begin his tenure as EMS Director beginning next Monday. So we're excited to have Dave with us. Dave is a former county EMS employee. He moved to Wilson County and was the Wilson County EMS Assistant Director for many years. We're excited to have Dave back, and we're looking forward to the things that Dave will do for our EMS. So we'll hopefully have Dave introduced at our next meeting to the public as well. Again, we mentioned Hurricane Dorian. Again, thanks to our OES staff and all the work and DSS staff as well. Want to mention a couple of meetings next week. Number one is the State of the Military, which is Tuesday, September 24th at 11:00 a.m., which will be at the Goldsboro Event Center. Now, this event is sponsored by the Chamber. And then our base community council, the regular quarterly meeting, will be next Thursday to 26th at noon at the Goldsboro Event Center. So two, they're, they're different meetings, but still kind of focused on the military in Seymour Johnson. And that's all I have for this time.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just made my comments about the hurricane and so forth. The other thing that I, and I went to some others, but I can't come up with any call on it too soon. But I did attend the elected, elected officials, pork and politics, I put on by the Chamber last Tuesday. And as, as every year, it was, it was, it was a good get-together that where you could share with other elected officials from the state and local level, and always a great time. A lot of people recognized. But other than that, Mr. Chairman, I have, I think that's it.
Thank you. Thank you. Chris Crumore.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I really have one, one particular item I want to share. As you all know, whenever we have our meetings out of Wayne Community College, often I'm asking them about progress as far as community skill development. I, I just want to announce that, and Bill might want to verify this young lady's title, but a young lady by the name of Tammy Childress is active with workforce development in the eastern part of North Carolina, has a job relationship to that title, I think it's her title. But she met with, met at Wayne Community College. I asked her to meet, and she, we sort of combination set up a meeting with Ms. Dawson, and it was about workforce training for the people who are at the very bottom of the skill development ladder. And I have, I've advocated for that for years, and not to give away that which is in its influence of meetings and progress, but sometimes you just need to acknowledge in the moment that there's work being done. I just wanted to, you know, referencing for public consumption, Wayne Community College involvement, the director of the community, and that's not it. But I hate to try to give Ms. Dawson's title, but it's over, having to do with workforce development, training and so forth and so on. But she's actively involved in sort of a triangular situation, to try to make some workforce development things better for folk. And I don't want to mislabel this, but there are all kinds of people who love and go out to the Community College to get their training. There's a whole segment that does not make it out there. That group, we're trying to work on, greasing the skids for the relationship between the college, but providing something off-campus that that would be more appropriate for their skill aspirations, because a lot of time it's just hands-on, it's out there in the public sector and so forth and so on, out there where the road meets the road. Just wanted to bring a little bit of attention to that. Now, keep this board actively comprised of what we are doing as we move along. Very important to me, just want to share.
Mr. Drumore.
I, I want to make sure everyone is, I hope you all read the article that was in the paper and heard the exciting news that four of our schools were removed from the low-performing. Now, does that answer everything? No, but we're moving in the right direction. The school system and the administration gets, gets a lot of criticism. But I think it's time for us to recognize that evidently our school administration is moving in the right direction. To see that Carver Heights, which was the lowest-performing school in North Carolina, was here in Wayne County, and the state wanted to take that over. The school administration fought that and was able to retain that school, but they changed the administration of that school. And they invested in bringing about better programs and so forth, and that school has really moved. Just to cite some of those, Carver Heights Elementary School is not only was removed from the lowest-performing school, but actually had an 11.6% increase in end-of-grade composite scores, which was the third-highest increase by Wayne County Public School Elementary School in 2018 and 19. I can go on and on with this, and I won't, but it's very clear that Dr. Dunsmore and his team needs to get, we, we need to give them a big shout-out because they are moving in the right direction. Have they got more work to do? Yes, they've got a lot more work to do. But hopefully, we can find a way to move all of these schools out of low performance, because that's a big black mark for Wayne County. When industry and people look to, to move into a county, they look at the schools as you would if you were moving into another county. And for us to have such a black mark, we've got to put the resources there necessary to improve our schools, and it's the education. As John Bell says, "You can teach under a tree," but it is the, the type of education that they are teaching our students. And I, I just want to give a big shout-out to them because they richly deserve an attaboy. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Mayor.
Mr. Ben. Oh, I did attend one committee meeting since our last meeting, and that was the Gateway. They're doing a lot of work down in the Mount Olive area, trying to establish a permanent fixture down there. So they got the routes all worked out, and they're just waiting for the state budget to complete so they can get their grants and stuff in place. So that's the only meeting that I attended since last meeting.
Mr. Ray, come on.
Mr. Comore.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've got two or three things, try to be brief. I did attend, we've been busy, all of us have been busy. I did attend the fundraiser right at the fire grounds for the North Carolina Kason Unit. That was, it was amazing. Last year, I think, was the first year that they did that fundraiser, had, I think, was thirty-some motorcycles in the, in the caravan. This year, I've heard different figures, but, I mean, it took them thirty minutes to get the motorcycles in. I'm, I'm going to say five hundred motorcycles. I mean, I've heard more and I've heard less, but that's just a figure that I've heard, and that was a huge success. Also, the youth rally that they have at the Maxwell Center twice a year, a lot of the churches in the county, they go together and have a youth rally. It's non-denominational, you know, everybody's welcome. That was a great success again. The staff out at the Maxwell Center told me that they had, I think, was seven hundred and thirty chairs set up, and then they had to set up more when the, when the kids started showing up, and I think the figure was somewhere around eight hundred. So, that was a big success, and if we can just keep one kid out of trouble, it's worth the effort. And the opening of EMS Station Eleven, it had already been mentioned, but that's great. I mean, when we started this project several years ago, our, the primary objective was the EMS station at Seven Springs, because we were out of it. Airlot was gracious enough to let us use one of their stations to house the unit for a while, and then, you know, we were also, the maintenance on two of the buildings that we were using that the county did not own was fixing to really get to be expensive, and, and, and that priority was to, you know, build our own facilities, and then at the northern end was, we only had one EMS station, and really spread thin sometimes, so with, you know, by acquiring the Antioch Fire Station and then building another EMS station on the Hunter Road, that pretty much covered the northern end. But I think one thing that all of us kind of overlooked except Commissioner Dougherty, they were still a void over in the eastern part of the county, and that was probably, should have been on the priority list along with the others, but it's, it's great to have another station because now, you know, we, we've got eleven EMS stations, and they can't, many counties say that they can respond and be, if trucks is in the station, be in a location in eight minutes. And with the Q V R at Belfast, we've got twelve locations to respond, spron that off, but I think that the Wilson EMS station, that's probably one of the best-kept secrets, because that was, that, that really, on some of us' radar screen, it didn't pop up, but, but, but we finally saw the light, and, and we're in good shape now. We're in good shape. And, and just for note, when we had the ribbon cut the other day, this was not planned. We had got through, I had said my little bit, Commissioner Dougherty had said theirs, the two Wilson daughters had said theirs, and just about the time we were ready to say amen, was you believe they had a call. I mean, we had the part and sees, I mean, it, it was not staged, it was, it was legit call, but that, that proved pretty early that there was a need for that station. Thank you all.
Mr. Comore.
Just one thing, I missed a lot of meetings because of my back. Well, finally, next month, they're going to fix my back, so, maybe in the November meeting, the first one, they'll allow me to do a telephone, but I hope to get back into some sort of semblance of a normal life after this surgery, so, lock on wood. That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Comore. Thank you all for your attendance and extra meetings you go to. Where to go to close session, Mr. Parker, for the purpose of?
Yes, sir. Consult with council to maintain your attorney-client privilege and to discuss the location of business or industry in Wayne County.
All right. Motion to go to the station. So, move on, please.